So we are now opening a joint meeting of the Fairfax Town Council and the Fairfax Planning Commission, which needs to end promptly at 7:30 because we'll have a council meeting following that. So Michelle, the town clerk, would you please do a roll call of both bodies?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I will start with the town council. Council member Kohler.
Here.
Council member Cutrano.
Here.
Council member Goddard.
I'm here.
Vice Mayor Hellman.
Here.
Mayor Ackerman.
Here.
And so all council are present. With the planning commission, I will start with, not council member, Commissioner Cindy Swift.
Here.
Commissioner Newton.
Here.
And I believe you are the vice chair of the commission at this time?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, vice chair. Commissioner Green. Not present. Commissioner Fregoso.
Present.
Thank you. And Chair Rodriguez.
I have some excuse.
Okay, she is not here. So it looks like we do not have a quorum of the planning commission.
For members of the planning commission, Esther.
Oh, I missed, I missed one. I'm so sorry.
Sorry.
I'm sorry. Commissioner Barber Gonzalez, Gonzalez Barber. It's not here. Okay, thank you. So we have three commissioners.
So are we able to proceed?
You are able to proceed. You won't be making any decisions tonight since it's just a study session.
No action items tonight. Okay, so I don't know who will begin, maybe planning director Berto.
Yes, if town manager Toy doesn't wish to make any introductory remarks, I can kick this off. Town council and planning commission members, tonight kicks off the formal housing element discussions. That the town council, as you know, on your meeting on April 7th authorized the hiring of EMC planning group. And we have the two presenters from EMC here tonight, Andy Flower and Richard James. And there's no time like the present to get going, as will be discussed in their presentation. We have a hard deadline to get this housing element done. And they will be outlining what is entailed in the update process as part of that. I would also like to point out that we are proposing 18 public meetings as part of that schedule. And that this is the most transparent housing element process that town has conducted to date. I will also be discussing a minor change to the proposed housing element subcommittee at the end of the EMC presentation. So, Andy and Richard, if you could keep track of that. And with that, I will turn it over to, I believe, Richard, you're going to be making the initial presentation. Okay.
There we go. Now I can talk. Okay, we're good to go. And every, everyone can hear me?
Yes.
Excellent. So I'm Richard James, principal with EMC planning group. I give you just a very brief introduction. Our firm has been in business in Monterey since 1978. The founder of the firm, Michael Groves, is still senior principal. And we have maybe 20, 25 people on staff. We do a whole variety of stuff from general plan elements to specific plans to a lot of SEQA equal split probably between private sector and public sector clients. I joined the firm in 1998, so I'm kind of a relative newcomer as far as EMC is concerned. I kind of got my first introduction to planning back in the 80s when the little town I lived in started a referendum against a subdivision, ironically enough, up on the ridge top above our little town. And we didn't like that idea. So we raised enough signatures to get the board of supervisors in Alameda County to rescind their approval. So that was kind of my first taste of planning. And then I got active with the bicycle coalition over in Oakland. And a couple of the people on the, on that, in that volunteer group were planners. So it kind of got me introduced to planning. And I got my master's degree back in 97 or so. And I've been working with EMC ever since. And I've done five housing elements. EMC planning group does, as I said, a whole bunch of different types of projects. And we do them, we don't do huge numbers of any of them, but we do them really well. And we think very carefully and crafted specifically to the place where we're working. We're not robotic or formulaic in how we do our work. So try to craft each one carefully and go through a large, you know, in this case, a very extensive public input process to come to the conclusions and recommendations. Andy, do you want to say a few words about yourself? No, maybe Andy doesn't want to say a few words about himself. So we'll just go into the next slide. Housing element loss, it was enacted by the state in 1969. We have finished the fifth cycle of housing elements. They varied over the years from like six to eight years in length, as far as they kind of change it around from time to time. It's all part of the government code. And the Department of Housing and Community Development reviews housing elements. Unlike all the other mandated elements that the state has for each of the local general plans, the housing element undergoes a lot of scrutiny at state level. And and so there's a whole process where we do a draft, we submit it for them to look at, and then they give us comments back. Tied in now with the housing element is the safety element update that's mandated. So we'll be doing that as well in this process. The key thing is meeting the arena number. That's the regional housing needs allocation. That's a huge number that comes from the state and gets divided amongst all the different regional planning boards. In our case, the Association of Bay Area Governments, which has doled out 490 units to County Fairfax. As you can see here, this is a list of all of the housing elements in Marin County. Most of them are, well, they're all adopted. Fairfax has the unique classification of being conditionally in compliance. We believe that has to do with a zoning action that has not yet been completed. And if that were to be completed, the record type would change from conditional to adopted. But essentially Fairfax is in compliance as are all of the Marin County jurisdictions. So we mentioned the arena numbers, regional housing needs allocation. And you can see Marin County has a total of 14,405. About 3,500 of those are assigned to the unincorporated area. Santa Rafael obviously gets a big share because they're the biggest city around. Fairfax gets 490. Looking over this list, you can see Bill Vidier at 160 and Ross at 111 are the, the next smaller allocations. But so one of the big challenges in this housing element, and you know, it's going to be a big, high-profile type of, of process. We need to look for 490 housing sites in some means or other. So that's going to be one of the big pushes for this effort. Next. This is a graphic from HCD Housing and Community Development in Sacramento. It's kind of the overall framework for preparing a housing element. It's all kind of within the, you know, kind of framed there by public participation. We have a huge public participation component for this. And my experience in other housing elements is, and prior to this current cycle, when the arena numbers have gone sky high. And a lot of jurisdictions, it was just kind of a little exercise you went through. And maybe held one little meeting. And I've, I've attended one where we sat there with planning director and I in an empty room and waited till the end of the, of the session was over and nobody had shown up and we all went home. But I've been in others where there have been highly active. And I would anticipate Fairfax will be one of those. So basically you review and revise the existing housing element, the fifth cycle housing element that we have already in place. You analyze the housing needs. We'll go into a little more detail on that later. You look at the resources that are available, what land is available, empty land, this, you know, less than fully utilized land and things like that. And you look at also constraints on housing. Are there constraints in somehow inherent in this, in the town zoning? And then the regulatory framework likewise, are there, are there barriers to housing? HCD really likes to get rid of barriers to housing so that the market can act and produce housing. And all those things feed into a set of programs. So the, the really, the two key components of housing element are identifying sites and then devising programs that help streamline and facilitate the realization of housing. Next. This is an overall look at the timeline for the housing element and safety element. Analysis will be kicked off immediately. We've already contacted A-Bag for their data packet. And I think we already heard back from them. So that part will be taking place right away. We intend to get the safety element done as soon as possible because we think the safety element may have some pieces to it that will really inform the housing element in terms of sites and where they can go because there's a high fire danger and we identify, you know, that this is problematic up on these little windy twisty roads. We may want to try to limit the order of how new housing units that go from those types of places. Also, they have floods, you have earthquakes here. So that kind of feeds into the whole site options, which will be taking place over the summer and into the fall. We've planned to do a fairly extensive look at what the site options are, hopefully come up with, you know, a number of options to choose from. I know that's going to be difficult with a total of 490 as our target. But we'd like to come up with, you know, sites and approaches to getting to that 490 number so that we have some choices to look at. By winter, turn of the year, the next year, we'll be coming up with a SEQA decision as to whether we can go with a negative declaration or an EIR. We've got that programmed in, I believe, for February. I think we can make that a little earlier if we need, feel like we need a little more time in the process. Housing element, it says spring of 2022, that's the public draft of the housing element. Housing element process will be starting, of course, right at the very, very beginning. And we will have a couple of different drafts. One will be an administrative draft that staff looks at and makes comments on. And then we'll get a draft that we send to the state for their review. And then their public draft, we had, had programmed in after the state had had their look at it. We don't want to get too far ahead of the game and have the state look at it and turn things all topsy-turvy by saying, we don't like this, we don't like that. So we, whoops, what happened? Well, my view changed, but I don't know, maybe yours didn't. So then we'll work on the draft during the spring and summer of 2022. Public hearings are scheduled in the fall and then submittal to HCD is mandated. The timeframe for, we're going to try to get in by December of 2022 or January 2023. Next. So these are kind of the key components of analyzing data for the housing element. The first box, their data, that's basically characterizing the community, looking at census data and other types of data. And saying, what are the characteristics of Fairfax, particularly as they pertain to housing and need for housing? And then discussion of the data, we look at how does Fairfax compare to the region or to the state, identify themes. A good example of this, I did the housing element for a little town called Atwater out in Merced County. And they had a really high percentage of female-headed, single-parent households and very large households. And so we devised some of the programs around that outcome. How can we accommodate that particular demographic? And then all that connects to the need, the policies and the programs that are in housing element directing the town how to proceed and facilitating development. So we look, what we look at is the existing programs in the fifth cycle housing element, gaps in meeting the housing need. And new programs will be implemented. Some of those are to meet new state law. For example, at one point, there was a mandate from the state to have a zone where homeless shelters were allowed without discretionary approval. So there's things like that to come up from the state that we need to react to, to make sure we're in compliance. Next. And here we go. We've got a number of slides here that launch into the detail of our schedule. And I don't intend for everyone to look at every single line. I think you've probably got this in your packet anyway. But the point here in the first slide is we have a lot of outreach happening right at the beginning of the process. We've already, as I said, contacted A-Bag. We will have a meeting with state housing and community development early in the process. The sixth cycle that we're working on has been underway down in Southern California for quite some time now. So our hope is that we talk to our analysts at HCD and say, hey, what kind of pitfalls are you seeing down south? What can we, what can we avoid? What should we look out for? So that we've got a good idea going in from the very beginning of what kind of stuff is, is HCD finding where the draft housing elements they've looked at so far aren't really up to what they would like to see. So we'd like to get all that upfront. Then we'll meet with a whole section of the various committees and commissions with the town as well as the Marin Wildlife Prevention Authority, get their inputs early on while we're collecting the data and starting to get our, our feet wet on how this housing element is going to play out. And that will lead us to an ad draft, safety element, as I said initially, we're going to lead with that and then get to the housing element. Next. So there are two things going on kind of together during the summer, this summer. One of those is the safety element, as I mentioned. We'll have an open house regarding the safety element when we get started on the, well, we'll have the ad draft for staff review and then we'll have an open house to discuss where we are on the housing element. All right, excuse me, the safety element. And then we'll be reporting to the planning commission and town council on where the safety element stands before we completely finish it up. And also in that timeframe, we'll be starting the traffic report, kind of looking into, you know, what are the, what's going to be happening as far as traffic and how it affects the safety element and how to, you know, particularly, you know, evacuation. And how it affects the housing element depending on, you know, how many houses and where they go, how many units. Next. So the other piece this summer is to really dive in deep on the options for housing sites. And we've got a pretty long process for site exploration, starting actually almost immediately here, late April. We'll come out with a draft site options report sometime in July. And then again, report that, actually, before we finish the options report, we'll be reporting to the planning commission. And then after a draft site options report is done, we'll be reporting to town council. So that everybody will be abreast of where we are. We can get some input from those two bodies and get a little more information and feedback as far as how people want to go, how the, how the commission and the council want to go on those. So then we will finalize that site options report. But I want to emphasize that when we finalize the site options report, we're not done with sites yet. The site selection process will then fold into the overall housing element development. Let's see, what anything else here? So you'd see we've got about three months during which we'll be writing the administrative draft of the housing element for staff review, feeding in all of the various inputs and data and research that we've done to date. Next. So getting into fall of this year, we'll have a workshop, as I said, with, with both planning commission and town council regarding the safety element, followed in the next month or two for the housing element as well, because we'll have the administrative draft housing element done at that time. Once town council has blessed our draft, what I'm calling our draft, the town's draft of the housing element, then we will send that off to the state and have them look at it. There's a mandate that they get that, I believe it's 60 days prior to adoption by the town council. We're going to send it to them about a year ahead. And the reason for that is we want their input ASAP. So that if there's something they bring up that we need to make a major change to what we have already developed, we've got lots of time to react to that. And so if we go to the next slide, you'll see that at the very bottom, we've got a long bar that's, um, HCD consultation is needed. In practice, what happens is you submit a draft, they, they call you and they say, hey, tomorrow at 2 o'clock, how about we discuss that housing element? And they phone you and you spend two or three hours on the phone with them, desperately trying to copy down all the notes because they'll start on page 75. They say, oh, my next comment on some page 32. And they go back and forth and it's, it's kind of chaotic. But I'm going to have Andy with me, I think, on that call. So there's two of us taking notes. They don't seem to ever like to send stuff in writing. But that's not the only consultation with HCD. We said, we do the initial one, we do the formal one after they've reviewed it. And my experience is you can call them anytime and talk about stuff. And I've even done stuff where I talk to them on the phone, they say, you know, this program here, can we reword this? You reword it, you PDF it, you email it off to them and they call you back in an hour and they say, hey, that's looking good. Got one other suggestion. So there's a lot of back and forth that goes on with the state. It's not just a static kind of process where here's a draft and they send it back here. This is our comment. There's actually quite a bit of, of back and forth negotiation with them. So that process is interesting. We'll be starting out the noise report, traffic report was already underway at this point. And like I said earlier, the preliminary environmental, we have in the schedule right now, from basically, it's basically the month of January, starting right after Christmas and ending before January. That is our investigation into what are the probable environmental effects based on the draft that we sent off to HCD. And it's scheduled late enough in, on the schedule that if HCD came back with some comments, we would take that into account. If we want to buy ourselves a little more time on preparing the SEQA documentation, we can probably move that into October. I don't think there's a problem with that. We'll still, we'll have our town accepted draft already that we're sending to HCD. And, you know, there may be a little bit of changing that we need to accommodate. But I think if we wanted to make a decision on what direction we go on SEQA, we could probably do that in October rather than January. But in any case, we do have plans for report to the planning commission and the town council regarding SEQA to make that decision and let people know on the council and on the commission, here's what, here's our preliminary findings on environmental. And give everybody a, a good idea of what we think the issues are going to be. And when that process is, is concluded, then we will do a 30-day scoping period where we take agency as well as public input on what should be included in the SEQA document. Next. So this is kind of just an outline of how SEQA will run. So we're coming along here and we haven't made a decision. We're going to make a decision, do we do an initial study mitigated NAGDAC? Or do we do an EIR? Now, obviously, the EIR is a much more comprehensive document than an initial study. A little more defensible, includes alternatives, things like that, and goes into greater depth on everything. So there may be a comfort level to go with that. Per the SEQA guidelines, the only real determination point is, is there a significant and unavoidable impact? If there is, you have to do an EIR. But there are other reasons you might decide to do an EIR. Honestly, I've never done an EIR for a housing element before. They've all been NAGDACs. A lot of them didn't even have mitigation measures. But this is the sixth cycle, the sixth cycle is a little bit different than the past cycles. So, you know, depending on what we find when we look for those sites and if we need to do significant rezoning or whatever comes down the road, we don't really know yet. Those kind of factors will, I think, play into whether we go down the road, do an initial study NAGDAC, or if we go to the EIR. Next. All right. So this is a capsule of the housing element and SEQA kind of together here. So the public housing element preparation would be completed in April of 2022. Concurrently with that, we would be writing either the initial study or the EIR for administrative review. We can't really finish either of those until we've got the public housing element done because we need to have a project description in the SEQA document, although we'll have a pretty good idea. This type of a project, we're going to have a pretty good idea what the housing element looks like, probably back in the fall. So we've got time there, but we will be holding an open house. We want, you know, all the public input to feed into this process to the extent possible. So we will probably draw out that EIR period beyond, you know, into May, just to make sure that we've got an adequate public input process before we go out on the streets for public review. So once we get that, we have the public review drafts come out, looks like May, and that one goes off the chart. But I would say that's probably end of June and another open house. Specifically, if we go, is the, is the mitigated NAGDAC. So there's an open house scheduled earlier if it's a NAGDAC and later, I think, if there's an EIR. Yeah, here's the EIR, the open house, presidencies be, that is the open house associated if we go with an EIR. You can see the public review period is tentatively set then for June 13th to August, July 29th and July. And then we've got about a month or so to prepare the final EIR. Finally, IR will be the response to comments and any changes to the text of the draft EIR that come out of those comments as well as corrections of any errors that people spot, that kind of thing. But generally speaking, I mean, if we got 200 comment letters, say, on the EIR, you still have a fairly limited number of topics that people comment on. So it doesn't really matter if you get 10 letters or 200. Usually it doesn't raise that many new issues just because you have an extra, you know, 190 letters. It's, uh, it's still the same issues that come up. And the next slide, I think, shows the hearing schedule. Yes. So planning commission, we get the first hearing. Following that hearing, we will take their comments and maybe after the second hearing, we'll see. But we'll, we'll assemble all of the planning commission comments on housing element probably into a revision sheet. And then that will go on to the town council. So they'll have the housing element plus planning commission recommendations for revisions when they review it and make their actions. And then once town council has voted on it, if they vote yes, they may direct some changes to the housing element. So those will be again made. And then the final version of the housing element will be sent off to HCD. And then we'll, we'll see how they like it. Once, once in a while, you know, town council maybe says, oh, we really don't like that program or something and we take it out. But HCD may fight back. So the process may not end there with the filing of the housing element, depending, you know, how things play out. But for the most part, we'll have had their input, we'll know what they want. And there may be some back and forth with HCD after, after the housing element is adopted by the council. So there's the potential that sometime later in this process, this comes back to council if there have been changes and there's some disagreement at the state level. So we'll play that by your own when we get to it. Next. This summarizes the major milestones for the current year. You see, right there on the first dot in April, the introduction to planning commission and town council. You can see that we've got workshops for the safety element, sites and housing, housing element. So scattered through there were one, two, pretty much every month, other than May and August, we are coming to either the planning commission or town council. We are coming to either the planning commission or town council to fill you in on where we are. And then the next slide, our major milestones in twenty twenty two. And again, we uh report back to uh commission and council in January, February, that's on sequo. Uh, possibly that could move up. And then the hearings towards the fall and we've got some open houses through the middle of that period. Next. All right. So from the state's perspective, they want us to submit a draft element at least sixty days prior to adoption. We're going to be submitting it probably close to a year prior to adoption. Because we want that housing element solidified so we can go through a secret process that could be fairly lengthy. So HCD reports its findings to the jurisdiction. That's a phone call, as I said. Jurisdiction considers their findings prior to adoption. We've got um basically nine months of writing and revising built into our schedule after that. Uh, before we bring it to planning commission for their recommendation. And we can optionally resubmit it to HCD. My my experiences, we just go back and forth with them on a few pages here and there. That's how it's usually worked when I've done it. Uh, then we submit the adopted element after town council has uh has blessed it and they get ninety days to take a look at it. Uh, the key date is when does town council act on it and adopting it? Um, if they adopt it within one hundred and twenty days of the due date. That's great. You're good for eight years, assuming that that eventually HCD certifies it and says it's good. However, if you miss that hundred and twenty uh day window. You uh get penalized and you have a pair of eight of a pair of four year housing elements. So in two years from now or two and a half years from now, you'll be right back where we are now, uh, working on your four year element. And we want to avoid that. So we're we'll shoot and the schedule is set up to adopt this in time. With that, I'm going to hand it over to Andy, who's going to talk about the public participation piece. You ready, Andy?
Yes, uh, thank you, Richard. I finally found my unmute. While presenting, yeah. Um, just a quick introduction, if uh if if the mayor is interested. Be happy to give a quick introduction to. Thank you, Mayor Ackerman. Nice to be here with you today, um, mayor and and council members. I've Marin has been my uh home away from home. I've got extended family here. So I've um, my heart is really in the land here. I I I really love coming back to to this place and um and I've got a real passion for housing. I focused on it when I was in grad school. And I I just want to let you know that Richard and I both come from real um creative explorations for for resolving issues with cities. Richard has done some great work at San City, a very um inventive, innovative solutions for things. And and I have have done some work at the city of Monterey to help um connect the dots where where things didn't seem possible. So we're really excited to work with with all of you, planning commission, uh, city council, mayor Ackerman, and all of the subcommittees and and groups, commissions and committees. And the people at large, we're really excited to partner with all of folks here who live in Fairfax. And we're looking forward to your participation and we're going to bring in this platform that I've I've only had some sneak preview about the kinds of things that are capable with it. And today we've got uh Michelle Stevens, who who works with the platform on a daily basis. And she's going to share with you some of the exciting things that that I've come to understand that uh the name of the platform is Bang the Table, which isn't that exciting? We we uh with uh with this platform, one of the first decisions that we'll need to make is to name our project here for uh for creating this six cycle housing element. And so we're going to invite um all of all of the decision makers here at the city to lead an effort for naming the project. We'll be onboarding this platform by mid May. And so our our first weekend, we're going to use just a a temporary website because or a temporary named website. Because in the end, we want the project name to be the the website name to make it very easy for folks to um to share their ideas and opinions and comments. And so um there's all kinds of fun names that different cities have come up with, and you'll see some of them that Michelle will share. And uh, we're going to ask you to um jump in and put your ideas on the ideas board. And and we'll ask the public to funnel their ideas through you. And one week later, we'll be asking you all to vote um on the top three names that you have. And then we'll be we'll be naming the uh the project going forward and and mid May coincides with our calendar in this way. We'll be meeting with a lot of those committees at that time. So a a lot of those early meetings will be sharing with the groups on how to um jump in on this platform and to really um be as close partners as possible and truly be engaged and aware of all the steps throughout the process. We'll have ways that we can um push information out and and draw people in at important milestone moments. And uh, and I I believe Michelle may be online.
I am.
Great. Okay, so I will stop there and ask you to take it from here.
Thank you, Andy. Hi, I'm Michelle Stevens. I'm a planning commissioner in Lafayette, Colorado. So I I've been on your side of of the of the counters. I'll try to make this as exciting five minutes of your lives ever. So I'm Michelle Stevens. I'm going to share my screen. I work with Bang the Table and we're really excited to partner with you and EMC on your housing element. Bang the Table is the company. Our platform is called Engagement HQ. And we're based in Australia, although our headquarters in North America is in Boulder, Colorado, which is where I'm at. Um, Engagement HQ, again, the platform focused on four main things. And we're going to work with EMC and your team to really make sure that we're getting more people involved, different people, be as inclusive as possible. Use that information that we collect as part of our engagement activities to make community informed decisions. So rather than this top down approach that sometimes we fall into in local government, really going to work with that community to listen to what they're asking for and come up with creative solutions with them. And the platform helps us do that by keeping everything in a single location. Making it really easy for us to report back out to the community about what we're hearing and continue to involve them and reengage them throughout this long process, helping to build trust throughout the process. This is our tool spectrum. So all eight of these tools we may use at different times throughout the project. On the left hand side is more of a participation between our constituents, between the residents, discussion forums, brainstorming, using map based tools where people can drop pins, take surveys, even upload images and files. That way we can get, we can really meet them where they're at with the with a variety of tools, not just a survey, not just a Zoom meeting, and even going beyond that face to face meeting. In the center, there's a variety of tools that are more individual, where focused on empathy building or individual participation as far as storytelling, guestbook commenting and publicly answering questions that the community asks so that we become that we're very responsive and able to do almost real or near real time conversations. And then on the right hand side here are the more transactional and more traditional ways of online engagement. Polls are single question and surveys are are our standard way to get that very specific type of information from our community. In addition to those engage those primary engagement tools, our site will be supported with a bunch of context tools. Helping our participants to learn about the project, to understand whether we're making those decisions. And for those who are who like to go deep into the details, all that information is in a single location. So we can see previous uh meetings or previous plan documents as well as the conversation that is occurring right now. I'm going to take a look at a couple of examples from your neighboring committed your communities. And we'll start with Coronado, maybe not that neighboring, but neighboring ish. And so Coronado is using Engagement HQ for multiple projects, but their housing element is one of those. And what we're seeing here is a very typical project page that your pages or our pages will be like, where we have a description of what we're engaging on, those widgets or context information on the right hand side. Giving our participants an opportunity to raise their hand and say, we want to learn more, keep us involved as well as um humanizing who we are. We're not just a faceless, nameless website. We're your project team and we're working together with your city leadership, town leadership and uh resident stakeholders to come up with solutions to to meet our housing needs. Well, in Coronado here, they're using a document library, making it really easy to dive into the details. The newsfeed tool, which is a way to provide updates on the project. And right next to it is that survey tool. So our participants don't have to leave the site and go to a survey monkey. That information is side by side with the questions that we might be asking them. They're also using a polling tool and they've they've provided the opportunity for participants to register. In fact, are saying if you want to participate in the pool poll, you have to register. And that's one way for us to really dive into the data. It's still optional. They can take the survey, learn the information. But if they want to participate, uh, Coronado here is asking some for some registration information. And we can view the results as a kind of a teaser here and surprise, surprise, not a lot of people in support with the housing units that are required. But they've got some work to do here. Another example from Brea. This page laid out more towards their brand, more towards their style in their community. But same overall structure with um an embedded video. The right hand side has those that context information, including Zoom recordings from previous online meetings. A whole bunch of information about where they are in their process, FAQs. One of my favorites is the timeline. I think residents often get confused on how long this these processes last. They they're like, well, didn't we already tell you what we what we thought? And we know that this process will take a bit of time. They've they're also using a variety of tools, whereas Coronado had um the survey tool. Brea has developed a bit of a challenge to get people involved. They're also using that survey tool as well as the ideas tool. And this is where they're brainstorming. They're asking their community about a variety of topics and saying, tell us more. And it renders very similar to a sticky notes on a wall. Participants can include images and they can even text in their ideas to a phone number. So without a smartphone, without internet access, they can still participate on the site. And other participants can comment or up those ideas. And on our end will be really easy to pull those reports and understand who we're hearing from. Next, they're also using the um storytelling tool, which is a really great way to build empathy. You know, we tend to, especially I'm a city planner by background, and we tend to talk about units, housing density. And our residents forget that when we're talking about housing units, we're talking about people, firefighters, nurses and coffee shops. Any anyone who's actively in our community and and helping to humanize that by their own stories about where why they're having a challenge finding housing or what's working for them and not helps to um maybe help combat some of that initial, that's way too much density, that's way too much change for us. One more example, and then I know I'm out of time. This is in Lafayette. Their entire site is focused on their housing element. And again, their colors and fonts here match their city identity. So that right hand side still has those widgets, where are we in the process? They haven't stuck to dates. They've talked more about what they're doing step by step. So right now they're in this informing stage. They're letting their participants, their public know where they're at. But they're also letting them know where they're going. So no one feels lost in that process. Heavy on graphics makes it easy for learners who maybe English isn't their primary language. And of course, you can um use Google Translate as well as compose in languages other than English on the site. And they're using again, a variety of tools, that ideas wall. And in this case, they're engaging on different areas in town to collect those ideas. They have an active Q and A tool where members of the public can ask questions and the city can respond publicly, really increasing that transparency. But also allowing participants to search for their own answers without contacting the city. So a way to help save staff resources there. They're including a discussion forum and allowing participants to talk about what aspects about Lafayette do they value? And those participants can both interact with each other in a threaded conversation stream as well as upvote or downvote each other's ideas. Again, that storytelling tool, very powerful. And then, of course, our standard survey, we don't, there's always going to be a value to that survey. And they're using that poll as well about as part of this informing stage, how did you hear about it? And we can see it's kind of a mixture of people, um, ways to get informed about this process. And now I'll stop and turn it back to Andy.
Thank you, Michelle. That was great. Really appreciate the time that you've taken to assemble all of the um examples and and uh I'm excited to work together with Ben and with other folks to have a a website that's devoted specifically to folks at Fairfax. And we will um be open to ideas and um ways to evolve and and transform that to be something reflective of of um what you'd like to see in your city, in your town, excuse me.
Thank you very much, Andy. I I appreciate uh that comprehensive overview, including the schedule details. Um, as you can see, uh, council members and planning commissioners that uh we have a lot of work to jump into very quickly. Um, and that one of the first things uh we will be doing is setting up the schedule with the various Fairfax committees um that the schedule points to, um, get on their agendas and start that process. And then also this uh very powerful online platform, Bang the Table, or whatever we choose to name it. Hopefully we come up with something uniquely Fairfax. Although I kind of think Bang the Table isn't too bad for this process. But in any event, we'll get that online and fully functioning. Um, and just as a an idea we came up with, I've uh reached out to the Chamber of Commerce to try to provide some goodies. Uh, see if we can provide some goodies for people to register with this process. We all like free things. Um, and I feel like that's one way to incentivize people for participating. It's also a way to let uh people in the community know that our businesses are are very much open and and um welcoming customers at this time. So I think it could be a mutually beneficial process. People get can can uh register for a drawing. Maybe even on a monthly basis, uh, if they do register for this, because our goal is absolutely to get as wide a spectrum of the community as possible. We're also reaching out to the senior citizens groups, um, obviously the various Fairfax committees and their contacts. And we'll be, we intend to do some very focused outreach work and surveys with those. For example, something I discussed with the head of the chamber is to survey their workers. Um, and to actually just reach out to those people and find out what their needs are. I mean, I think we all know that 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 they're probably the most drastically affected by our current housing crisis and the high cost of housing. And many, uh, if not most of them, um, are committing in from somewhere else, which also contributes to our traffic problems. So um, I also sent out an email saying we obviously want to look to the wise counsel of uh your council and commissioners for your ideas, um, including um this very initial outreach process. So that's all going to be wrapped up in that. Um, and as a brief note, initially staff was uh proposing a housing element subcommittee that would consist of members of both uh the planning commission and the affordable housing committee. Uh, we've realized that that may create uh some hitherto unrealized uh uh Brown Act issues. And therefore, uh, we intend to proceed with simply the three planning commission members who are here at the meeting tonight. Um, who have already demonstrated their uh ability and willingness to start working on this housing element update. We've been looking at the existing housing element. So that's basically where we intend to carry that process forward. So with that, I think we'll turn over the rest of the meeting uh to your council and the commission uh for questions. Um, obviously, there'll be some public comments as well.
Thank you. Do we have any questions from council members or planning commission members on this, on these presentations or the topic? Stephanie? Vice Mayor Humman?
Hi there. Thank you so much. I appreciate uh the presentation, the information. I have a handful of questions, but I think they'll be very easy. Um, first, I want to say I really appreciate the buffer that you've built in um before you submit. I think that's very wise. Um. So the first uh from Mr. James, um, can you um explain for the public and for myself what you refer to as programs? Um, that's my first question.
Okay, so the programs are basically, they're like the policies you would see in a general plan and any of the different general plan elements like it. You know, circulation element, a land use element. But they're referred to by the state as programs and they're basically direction on how to proceed. And they, a typical housing element might have five or six different And they, a typical housing element might have five or six different categories of programs. You know, for example, fair housing, you might have two or three or four programs. You know, provide this or that to facilitate fair housing and, you know, non discrimination as an example. Probably you'd have a a program regarding your sites. You might have a specific site that you wanted to program to give some further direction on that site. You know, if you had a site that was suitable for, you know, very compact housing in a higher density. You might have a specific program addressing that particular site. But they're basically direction as opposed to the map that shows your sites.
Okay, thank you. And then as far as the open house, I see you have two scheduled before the determination of, you know, the MMD or the EIR. And one, one is before the draft site option report. And the other one is prior to the final site. Is that, is that correct?
I don't have this good right in front of me. That sounds pretty correct to me. I think the idea is that the site selection is probably the highest profile thing going on in this housing element. And we want to make sure that there's ample public input to that particular part of the process.
Right. So my next question is applied to that is how does the bang the table site interface with those with those? I would have, I would imagine it would inform EMC, but how do you plan to use that data? And information and insights, et cetera, at the open house? Or do you?
I think we, you want to talk about that, Andy?
Yes, yeah, depending on where we're at with shelter in place. It may be that the open house is virtual until we can have an in person meeting. And there's a number of things that that we can do and I can bring Michelle into the discussion as well. We've, we've talked about ideas for sharing little vignettes. So like you would in an open house, you go from station to station and you see a little vignette and you might learn something. And then you share your feedback. We can do a similar thing within the platform. And we can have it open and available for a set number of days. So in some ways it extends and expands the opportunity for people to be engaged in an open house. Rather than just having it in one or two afternoons, it can be over the course of, you know, three or four day period.
Okay. And then I I didn't, I had a hard time following, was it Michelle? Exactly on what elements of the bang the table were anonymous and other what what requires registration? Can you elaborate on that, please?
Sure. Andy, do you want me to take this one? All right. So the the decision about what is anonymous or not is up to the project page. So you can allow an anonymous survey but require registration to participate in a poll. And it's really up to the project team to to work with you to figure out what's the best way throughout the process. We, when we work, you know, every place is special and every place has their own concerns about registration being a barrier to participation. So you don't need to require registration at all. If you do, you get better data and you're really able to segment who you're hearing from. You know, are they residents? Are they employees? Do they visit once a year? Demographic information, and then you can use those demographic filters to really identify not only who's part of the conversation, but who's missing from the conversation. So throughout the process, we may start with a more open, fun. Tell us about your favorite place and just giving people the option to register. And then as we move through needing more demographic data on specific engagement activities. We can turn on that registration requirement. Alternatively, you can ask those demographic type of questions as part of a survey. And have those insights still skipping registration, but still giving you those insights.
Okay, thank you. So I'm hearing is as flexibility. It's really however you want to build it.
It really is. And if you want to see open house examples, I can show you those as well.
Thank you. And then is it, Ben, is it your team that will be helping design this with EMC and bang the table or whose role is that?
Oh, something to, okay, yes, we're already looking at some preliminary things. Michelle outlined, you know, things like the schedule, which as you could see, provides people with an opportunity to look at each stage of the process. So the framework is is very flexible, but it does contain key elements. Another aspect I like is that we'll be able to link into directly all of the planning commission and town council meetings. So if somebody wants to just sit there and go through an afternoon and just watch the meetings and catch up, they can do that. So there's some built in aspects that we intend to utilize no matter what. Because of the tremendous information potential. And other things will will work possibly with the subcommittee, possibly with the planning commission or even your council.
Okay, I'm almost done. The the meetings you have scheduled for our commissions or committees. Is that this same presentation or do you have a different presentation in mind? And what, how, how many minutes are you needing for those?
Good question. What you saw in the outline and in the schedule, it shows the major milestones. So each presentation before the commission and the council will be focusing on those different milestones. And each presentation will be tailored for that particular milestone. In terms of timing, I think it'll be kind of an iterative process where we'll have an idea what we want going in. As Richard mentioned, I think the site selection and assignment of housing is going to be the meat of this. And we'll take a lot of discussion. And so we'll, we'll need to sit and figure out how we approach that and how much time we take on the presentation versus the public participation. My hope is that we actually have a tremendous amount of participation through the bang the table platform. So that decision makers and recommenders have a lot of information already. But we also anticipate, of course, a lively exchange at those meetings.
I guess I'm honing in on one that's coming up in a couple of weeks for racial equity. How much time do you need for that one?
Um, I think we'll probably need to sit with Richard and and Andy and and figure out what type of information we specifically want from ResJ. So I don't, I don't have a specific answer for that. I would say probably assign an hour, just as a rough estimate. Just to sort of get an idea. And again, this may lead to another meeting.
Yeah, a special meeting. Okay. And finally, Richard, you mentioned that the sixth cycle is very different than prior cycles. Is that just primarily due to the volume increases that we're all seeing? Or is there any other distinctions that you can share with us?
Yeah, it's primarily due to the increase in the arena numbers.
Right.
But but there's also just an accumulation over the past, you know, five, six, 10 years of mandates from the state and a bunch of other aspects. You know, as far as homelessness and shelters and that type of thing. So there's a whole lot of of that that's sort of built up over the years. But the arena number is the big deal.
Okay.
The state, the state legislature has been trying to push jurisdictions to increase housing for decades, at least the last 15, 20 years. And their early efforts were kind of more on the incentive stage. And now they're definitely bringing out hammers and beating on people to get them to put together more housing. So there's just more and more and more state involvement over the last couple of decades.
Thank you. Really good presentation. Thank you.
Thanks. Council member Kohler.
Hi, thank you for the presentation. I have a list and why don't I just mention them all at once? And then it'll be kind of like you're on the phone with HCD.
Good practice.
Before we start there, I just want to mention the subcommittee that was initially contemplated was a mix of some planning commissioners and some unaffordable housing. And and I did speak to our town attorney today. And we figured out the potential Brown Act issues. And I had suggested that we stay instead with just the three planning commissioners on that housing subcommittee. And I want to also say that the reason I thought that was a good idea. It was two council members, myself and council member Goddard are on the affordable housing committee. And I see that you have something like five meetings planned with affordable housing. So I think that will cover that. So thank you, Ben, for bringing that up. And thanks to Jenna Coulson for helping us sort through that earlier today. So here's my list. You mentioned the having the 120 days within the due date. Getting an eight year housing element or after the due date, a four year housing element. And I'd like to know what the hard due date is in January of 2023, but we can just go through the list. Okay, um, I had also provided comments to staff earlier. And now I think your schedule for Sequoia, and I'm glad you mentioned that you could move that up more to October of this year. Was a little ambitious, let me say, and I think at a minimum, we need to really get the imminent, the initial study done in the fall, so we can know what direction we're headed. I think, having not worked in Fairfax, there will be a lot of community engagement, which I'm sure you've heard some of. And so I think we need to plan for, you know, as expanded as possible for the Sequoia schedule and really making those decisions early on. Whether we need a mitigated NIGDAC or an EIR so we can get started earlier. The other thing I wanted to ask about was, oh, and just one quick mention. Ben had mentioned other groups to be involved with. I don't think you need formal meetings, but when you start engaging folks in the community. There's a lot of folks that want to be very involved. But I think some of us, I am a member of the age friendly task force. And I think making sure that those folks who don't necessarily always participate in Fairfax council meetings or planning commission meetings should be integrated. Because we, we're trying to make our town more age friendly for everyone, not just older adults. So just consider that. And also I would just, here's a kind of a big question. Is, we know that we're entering at least year one of a drought. And we know that Marin Municipal Water District, or as they're rebranding themselves, Marin Water these days. Covers 191,000 customers in Marin County. There's about 30,000 that are North Marin Water District, but I want to ask you how early you're going to engage Marin Water? With the question, I mean, first question I have for you all is, are there any state mandates on water districts to come up with a way to supply water for these expanded arenas? And then the second thing is, is I guess I'm asking again, how early are you going to engage them is because do they anticipate any problems delivering water for this much expanded universe? You already showed over 14,000 from Marin County, which will be a big, most of their universe. But for Fairfax, they're all of our universe. So I guess my question is, how early are you going to start talking to them? Because we're going to hear a lot about that, particularly this year, but we always hear a lot about water, traffic and parking. So that's my list. I believe that's it. Thank you. Oh, and just one more thing, I would contemplate, you have two hearings with the town council. I think given our experience with housing issues in Fairfax, you should try to look at having more than two. I don't think we'll be able to do one and then the second one, we're done. So I I think just considering that as you work through the schedule. Okay, so hopefully you have a list of the things you can answer.
Okay, so.
If you don't mind, just to to remind us all, we've got 50 minutes left and we do need to take public comment. So just be wary of the time.
All right. So I just looked up the due date. It's tentatively January 30th, 31st of 2023. So you actually have 120 days after that to adopt the housing element. So there's quite a bit of fudge space there at the end of our calendar. We just tried to wrap it up.
Wait a minute, you said 120 days within the due date? Or 120 after? Are you saying that you have 120 days from January 31st, 2023 to get the eight year? Excuse me for interrupting.
Uh, yeah, just to say, let me just see exactly the wording here on HCD's information sheet. Jurisdictions on an eight year planning period, that's us that do not adopt their element within 120 calendar days from the start date of the planning period. Must revise the housing element every four years. Well, the date that they give in their table is the due date. And the estimated due date is January 31st of 2023. Now, it's, it's tentative and estimated at this point because it's based on when the regional transportation plan is completed.
Okay, thank you.
So but we can pretty much count, I think, on January 31st of 2023.
Okay, thank you.
Let's see, I acknowledge your comment on age friendly and including other than elderly in that category. Now there was all ages. Water supply questions, I'm not aware of a state mandate to serve water based on the arena allocations. We'll look into that though. And then the other question had to do with when do we first meet with Marin Municipal Water District? And I think that's early. They're not specifically in the schedule, but you know, those early meetings in May and maybe into June, we should be meeting with them right up front.
Great. Thank you very much.
And then certainly we can add an extra town council meeting if we need to.
And then just consider your SEQUA moving it up as you discussed it earlier.
Yeah, I think that's entirely feasible. Andy and I were discussing that prior to the meeting. And but I don't see a reason we couldn't bring that earlier. It's going to be a number, maybe three significant environmental issues probably that we're focusing on. So and we'll have a good idea early on.
Thank you.
Other comments or questions from council members and before we go to public comment?
I just had one, Mr. Mayor, because my colleagues asked a lot of great questions that I had as well. The one I had for Richard, it also relates to the sequel question. You know, you mentioned just now that there might be, there are a couple environmental concerns that you're probably going to be homing in on. And I was wondering, I know in past planning processes, the public is really interested in this mitigated NIGDAC versus negative declaration, I should say, sorry, versus the environmental impact review. And I was wondering what those, at a high level, what those issues might be. And the other question I had, you mentioned that you all haven't been a part of an EIR process for a housing element before. And I was wondering if there are folks at at your firm that have or, you know, how how you'll be informed in that process, since it sounds like it's sort of new territory, if and when we we come to that point. Thanks.
Okay, let me address that last one first. I've done five housing elements. And we also have another principal with the firm who's done probably quite a bit more than that in his career, not all with EMC. But we got quite a bit of experience on housing elements. Including, I think we did four or five during the fifth cycle. So what I meant to say is we don't do a lot of them, but we do enough. We know what we're doing. And we aren't rubber stamping or cookie cuttering anything that we do. It's all honed in to exactly what's needed where we do work. The other question I'd do the SEQUA. I might need you to remind me what the question was on SEQUA.
Well, on the issues.
Oh, the issues, the main issues. Yes, yes. Okay. Clearly, water supply is an issue. Water supply is a huge issue. And the water district just declared a water emergency last night. So, you know, it's, it's urgent at this point. Traffic might be an issue. Traffic's certainly an interesting question because A, you put more houses. A, you put more houses in, you get more traffic generated. But B, maybe you put more houses in and people who are working in those little shops downtown can find housing locally and don't need to commute in from, say, Santa Rafael or Nevada or someplace. So that, that one kind of goes either way and it's an interesting question. And then fire safety is certainly up there pretty high. Of course, we're doing the safety element as well. So we need, Sequoia needs to include changes, you know, in the new safety element as well as the housing element and any parallel changes made in the land use element. But I think those are the big ones, potentially biological resources, depending what sites you selected. But I, I think for the most part, you're going to be looking at sites that are, you know, not way up in the woods somewhere. You're going to, you're looking at sites that are, you know, close to your arterial roadway network for the most part. So, and, and there's a limited number of those. So.
I, I'd also jump in in terms of that, looking back to the sequel question is that you have somebody in-house that was part of your proposal who does EIRs, you know, and focuses on that. So you have in-house expertise, regardless of applications to a specific housing element.
Yeah. And the, the person who will be project manager for the Sequoia review is Sally Wrightout. And she has recent experience in preparing an EIR for a regional fire safety plan that was prepared in the Carmel Pacific Group, Carmel Northern Big Sur, that area. I'm trying to think, what's the golf course called?
Pebble Beach.
Pebble Beach, yes. They, they all got together, all the fire agencies in there, you got together and put together a fire safety plan. And we wrote the EIR on that with Sally as project manager. So she's got a lot of experience in that particular aspect, which will be useful, particularly for the safety element.
And Richard, what would you say our percentage of work through EMC Planning Group dealing with EIRs for numerous different kinds of general planned elements, things like that?
I'd say a huge part of our workload is Sequoia. Probably a third or two-fifths or maybe half. We've done well over 700 secret documents in the firm's history. So we've done lots and lots of Sequoia. That's why I can speak fairly confidently that we can move that decision up to October. I'm quite certain of that.
Thank you. Any other questions from council members and then we can go to public comment?
Or commissioners, of course.
Commissioners.
Or commissioners, yes. Commissioner Swift, did you have your hand up?
I did. I had one quick question for Richard on the project schedule, just for clarification, because I know you went over a lot of details there. And what I heard was public review would come after the initial submission to HCD for their review. So can you clarify that for me?
Yeah, what we want to do in this schedule is make sure that the draft housing element has been reviewed and vetted by HCD before we put out a public housing element and then do sequel on it. The reason for that being that if HCD pulls some surprise on us and says, no, 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 change all this, we haven't gone out to the public with that yet and we haven't done any secret review on it yet.
So the pub, so the public would not see the draft submission to HCD?
No, that would be a, a private town document submitted to the state. Although I believe once it's submitted to the state, it's public. So someone could request it.
I'm sorry to interrupt, Richard, but I, I recall having this discussion with you as well, that we, we do have it going to both the planning commission and then town council, that draft going, being vetted.
We do, yeah, you're right.
Public hearings with both bodies prior to.
Yeah, you're right, Andy. We are going to bring what we're, I guess we're calling that the HCD draft. We want the blessing of planning commission and the council before we submit it to Sacramento. So it will be public ahead of that, but it won't be.
That answers my question. Thank you.
It won't be the version, though, upon which we base the Sequoia review.
Yeah, also jump in and say that I don't anticipate there's going to be major surprises insofar as things like the housing sites and housing options will be thoroughly discussed by any number of committees. So, you know, we could talk about the overall documents, but when you break out the various components, they will be heavily reviewed and, you know, our, our whole outreach strategy is designed to elicit comments on all those key substantive aspects of the housing element.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Newton?
Thank you, Mayor Ackerman. Good evening, everybody. I'll try to make this quick. And I really appreciate the Bang the Table website presentation because I think up until now we've all been using combinations of the town website, Nextdoor, Facebook, Twitter, whatever, to have a public dialogue. And I'm going to go through my own little list similar to what Councilmember Kohler did. And you guys don't need to answer the questions because they're primarily questions that I've called from those sources over the past couple of days. And I want to kind of maybe give you a little prelude to what we're going to hear from the public. And a lot of it has to do with the Rena numbers and the difference between a 490 number that's been explained with the various levels of market rate, affordability, low income, moderate income, et cetera. And whether a density bonus can be applied to that between 35% and 50%, such that we're really talking about a 500 to 700 unit number. Other questions is the town keeping track of ADUs and junior second units? And have we looked at the predicted rate of applications for legalizing such units? Have we thought about legalizing 300 to 400 undocumented second and third units? And putting them on our assessment rolls in order to, you know, collect the taxes for those units? Or have we identified all the Airbnbs and are we assessing the taxes there? Can we create a fund to purchase more affordable units? What is the impact of the fact that we didn't follow through with some of the recommendations in the previous housing element with respect to changes in the zoning in order to allow for more units? And we've mentioned the conditional nature of our housing element. And what does that mean in terms of the units moving forward? You know, if we decide to pivot and go a different direction, because the reason we didn't adopt those changes that were referenced in the previous housing element was because of a variety of factors that I don't necessarily think are going to change right away. So what happens with those numbers and how they were calculated as we move forward? Are they added to the old numbers? So again, I don't think you guys necessarily need to answer all these right now. My own question has to do, well, it came again from a comment online. If we're talking about this safety element coming first as a means of informing us about some of the, you know, restrictions in our flexibility here. I, I have concerns about trying to push that as quickly as it looks like we're talking about pushing it. Someone suggested maybe that we do evacuation drills and see how that pans out on a real-world basis. So it's something for the town council to think about in terms of how are we really going to get our hands around the safety issues? That's it. Thanks.
Councilmember Goddard, sorry, I was muted.
Yeah, I didn't know if Commissioner Newton wanted any of those questions addressed or, okay, so they're just out there in the air. Just, I had something quick and it was a more of a suggestion. I was thinking about Michelle's excellent presentation about Bang the Table. And I was thinking it might be called Bang Your Head on the Table, but I think that probably isn't appropriate. I'm wondering how we're going to Fairfax-ize these questions in this forum? Because these kinds of things, there's so many cool and creative ways that we can do that to elicit input that really, really touches at the, the heart of who our and what our community is. So I'm wondering if maybe when you meet with the different committees, you might elicit some ideas, some questions, some things that specifically relate to what we're doing in town that really speak to our uniqueness. That might be a way to do it as you will, you know, instead of trying to gather everything from staff or from three planning commissioners. So just a suggestion and thank you for the presentation. It's great to meet you guys.
Okay. If there are no more questions.
Through the chair?
Yes.
Through the chair, I did have my hand up.
Oh, sorry, I missed it.
I don't have, thank you. I don't have a bunch of questions. I just have a couple of comments. I was happy to meet the group, the planning group that will be working with us. And also very happy to hear that we're talking about really taking a look at the safety element and, and doing an analysis of how it correlates with our housing element and our land use plan. So that we have a really comprehensive approach to where and what types of housing might be appropriate for this huge number that we need to produce? So that we will be able to incorporate those fire and flood safety elements in, in objective development standards that we could incorporate along with that objective standards work that's happening. I mean, I, I typically don't like social media that much, but I'm excited about this banging the table program. Mainly because I think it was Richard said that actually, Michelle did, it's a much more inclusive way to generate community engagement with many more people able to participate. Oftentimes, it's the squeaky wheel that gets attention. And other folks can't make it to the meeting or, or, or for whatever reason, they feel uncomfortable coming to meetings. And this gives us an opportunity to hear from those people we're not hearing from. Who are we not hearing from, I thought was an excellent comment of Michelle's and and so basically I'll leave it at that. I'm looking forward to the process. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll just add one very quick comment of my own, just agreeing with, with Commissioner Fergoso that it's the, the reason that there's so much push on us to produce this housing is because housing is a really major problem and it's ruining a lot of people's lives, not being able to get housing, not being able to be secure in their housing. And those of us who have housing are not the best spokespeople for, for that situation. And so it's, it's very important to get the input from the people who are driving from a long distance in order to work here or who in whatever way are really affected by the shortage of housing. But with that, if we don't have any other comments from, from those of us on these committees, I'd like to go to public comment because we don't have a lot of time. And given the number of attendees we have, I'd like to say a minute and a half for comments. We will have many more meetings on this and this is, this, there's no action item tonight. So if we can keep our comments very brief. And Michelle, if you would go to the public comment, please.
Yes, Mayor, I'd be happy to. Right now I see three hands up. They are Rob Jansen, Holly Dodd and Laurent. And I'll start with Rob Jansen. You are unmuted.
Hi, this is Robert Jansen. I heard a lot of talk about site selection and, and site, finding sites. And I believe Commissioner Newton did touch on this. Will it be considered or will there be a program to have second units be part of the solution?
Thank you. Oops, sorry. The next speaker is Holly Dodd. I hope I'm pronouncing your name right.
Yes, am I coming through? Okay?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Well, I just wanted to voice a concern. I feel as though this mandate is coming through with language that's fairly presupposi- presupposition, meaning that it's, it's talking as if it's a given that our community is going to be accepting this. And then the, and then there's this, it seems very interactive, but really this online system you have of engagement, it really is giving an aura of involvement, you know, a name. What do you like here? Do you like this area versus that area? But it's really not in asking the community whether or not this is something that they're wanting. This is a mandate that's, it's not coming from the people of our community. Our council people are supposed to be responsive to what the people of our community are asking for, not just coming down with top-down. It is very top-down mechanistic directives. It reminds me a lot of how communities were, have been forced to level forests for more freeways and highways. Yes, we do know that there is a housing crisis in the world and in our area. But is that because, is that because there's not enough housing? Or is that because we're not making the housing that there is more accessible? Thank you for listening.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Laurent, 1122, followed by Jessica Green and then Lynn. Laurent, you're unmuted.
Hi there. My name is Lauren.
Oh, sorry.
No problem, no problem.
Email address.
Yeah, that makes sense. I just wanted you to know that I am utterly horrified at the conversation that's happening today. I am beside myself at what is to possibly come of the fabric of this town. This is a very small town and I can see that these three people that are here today have absolutely no idea how small this town is with one to two barely roads going in and out of here. And the safety of every single summer, us having to deal with the possibility of a fire and the safety of, of this limited road space going in and out of this town. It is already full of traffic during parts of the day. And when there's ever a catastrophe of any kind causing traffic, it is just horrible. It's, it's hours of wait. So for you to think that we could have this much buildup in this town, this is disgusting. I'm appalled. And for you guys to all sit here and just hummedity dum about, about changing the complete town, I am beside myself. I, I'm going to do every single thing I can to make sure that this does not happen. I want to tell the whole town, I want the whole town involved and I want to have petitions signed. This is appalling and I am more than pissed that you guys are all sitting here talking all hummedity dum like this is going to happen.
Well, thank you, Lauren. Well, this will be a process.
The next, the next speaker is Jessica Green, followed by Lynn, followed by Jody Tims. Jessica, you're unmuted.
Yes, I, I do agree with her. I feel like the water shortage is, is a terrible thing going on right now. I don't know how you can okay any building at all when we're not going to be able to water our beloved gardens or flush toilets or who knows what? And, and yet add so many more units to this, this little town? And the fire hazard of all these people trying to get out of the hills that we already have? And to add more people and even adding them down to the bottom street? Because all these people are going to be trying to get out of the few little bottom streets we have, even the ones, the people in the, the flatlands. So it's a very dangerous situation. I feel this is, is really putting everybody in danger, putting so many units. And I think if any built, any units at all are built, they should be all affordable. Nothing, nothing market rate because that's, that's what we need here more than anything. And, and yet at the same time, I don't see how we can build more when we don't have enough electricity for the fire grid thing. So we're all going to be sitting here cold or hot without, you know, access to our stoves without water. We just don't have the resources to do this kind of building. And I don't see why Fairfax is in such a rush for doing this. I, it seems insane. That's, that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Jessica.
The next speaker is Lynn, followed by Jody Tims, followed by Lisa Blash. Lynn, you're unmuted.
You might have to unmute yourself, Lynn.
Hello. Hi. I, I, I agree with Lauren in every respect. Our neighborhood is going to have our emergency evacuation next month, which I hope a majority of the neighborhood participates in. But I recommend that the entire town have practiced drill evacuations. 1:00 AM in the morning, 3:30 PM, 6 o'clock PM, 9 o'clock PM. I mean, we had a traffic accident last year, I think it was, and forget it. Traffic backed up forever. I mean, the streets are narrow. There's, there's so many problems. Also, this development, this wall property development, that's another big, huge property with water. How are you going to get the utilities up there? And then to build out all these other places. I don't know if the schools can handle it. I mean, there's just so many problems and it's just not a NIMBY thing. It's actually caring for the people that actually live here. Whether they're homeowners or they're renting, they're all our community. And I believe we're just setting people up for tragedy. And the water drought, we've been through it before. This is worse than we had in the seventies. It doesn't resolve itself in one season. This takes a while, a long time to recuperate from. And during that time, while we're trying to recuperate and get enough rain, we're losing a lot of foliage and trees in the meantime. So it's a big problem. So, and I know, one more thing, that the COVID, a lot of people are working from home, but the traffic in this last year, since everybody's been working at home and there's kids have been working, doing their schoolwork from home, the traffic is worse than it's ever been. And the school has just started going back. And citizens have just started going back to their offices in a little bit. It will, they'll come back. San Francisco will come back. It's come back from everything. So people will go back there and work. So that's how I feel. I just don't, I know you guys are being told you have to do this, but there's got to be a way to fight back. Thank you.
Thank you, Lynn.
The next speaker is Jody Tims, followed by Lisa Blash, followed by Sandra Stamos. Jody, you're unmuted.
Okay. Good evening, council members and planning commission members. Unfortunately, I got my time off and I missed the presentation, but I have a gist for what the housing element, what we're facing. And, you know, I, I just want to acknowledge there's a number of major crises and existential threats that we face, not just in this town, but in this state and this, and this country and this planet. And certainly housing is one of them. Climate change is one of them. Economics is one of them. Racial issues, you know, there, it just goes on and on. So I just want to appreciate the role that you're all in as a community. We need to work with you and dialogue. As you know, I'm an advocate for older adults and disabled folks. And I'm concerned about the housing issues for our people, the people who are having to move out of Fairfax. So I'm appreciative of the outreach that the planning commission has done and the consultants to me as an advocate for older adults. And I will be in dialogue as best I can to support the work that we all need to do to get where we need to go on so many fronts. So again, I just really want to thank you for, for what you're doing. It's going to be a very hard conversation for all of us and there are many, many issues to consider. But I think if we just do the best we can, all of us, given the limitations and restrictions that are before us, that's all we can ask for. So thank you.
Thank you, Jody.
The next speaker is Lisa Blash, followed by Sandra Stamos. Lisa, you're unmuted.
Hi, I'm Lisa Blash. I'm both on our town's racial equity and social justice committee and our affordable housing committee. This is going to be a really interesting process. I really wish we were focusing on this issue because we care about our community, not because of a state mandate. Like other people, I'm a little worried about the numbers, but I think the numbers are a distraction. I really hope that people will spend some time thinking about a vision of what we want to see around housing affordability and equity, rather than just focusing on the worst case scenarios of what we don't want to see. I've been really impressed about how West Marin communities have been able to pull together to discuss housing issues and create housing opportunity. I think if Fairfax could disengage a little from the fight against the state and focus instead on our needs and values, I think this would be a more valuable effort. Here in Fairfax, 83% of local workers come from out of town, according to On the Map Census Tool. Many come from San Rafael, Nevada, San Anselmo, Petalina. These traffic, it seems like we should be creating housing that people who work in Fairfax can afford to live in. Meanwhile, homeownership here is so expensive that most of us relatively new homeowners need to commute out of county to afford to live here. And a good 22% of working age adults in Fairfax work in San Francisco. So the high cost of market rate housing here is driving a lot of the local traffic. I'm also really excited that we will need to do an assessment of fair housing during this process. And finally, I have a couple of questions. I'm wondering about how prone we are to SB 35? And if you can talk more about the penalties for not complying and when they kick in. Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa.
The next speaker is Sandra Stamos, followed by Richard Applebaum, followed by Kathleen Paylor. Sandra, you're unmuted.
I think I am muted. Is that okay now? Okay. I was just going to quickly say I met some of you at the tree committee meeting. And I don't know what makes everybody think you can even get homeowner's insurance. Ours was canceled. We had to scramble for a new policy. And we are, you know, any place that has two trees in Fairfax is going to be running into this problem. My insurance company refused to insure anybody in our neighborhood, which is not that far from downtown. I'm just going to say, you're going to run into this problem with homeowners insurance, no matter where, I think, in our town. That's all.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Richard Applebaum, followed by Kathleen Paylor. Richard, you're unmuted.
Thank you. As I commented at last town council, I don't believe that the council or the planning commission is behind a 490 to 700 number. That being said, clearly, the agencies that come up with these numbers have no real connection to our town. They don't visit here. They don't live here. They don't know what's going on. And I think that with all due respect to the affordable housing advocates, which I fully support, I'm not against all building. But this is just absolutely distorted, out of proportion situation. And I think what's troubling and what you got from Holly and Lauren and some others that have called in Jessica, I feel the same feeling is there's a sense, the way these presentations come across, that there's already been a tacit acceptance and an acquiescence to this reality. And so let's, let's be a town and, you know, bang, bang on the, bang on the drum and get all excited about a naming process so we can have this lovely process so that we can, you know, all get, you know, have our town, you know, destroyed. It's, it's an issue of infrastructure and safety and reasonability and it's not reasonable. So we, we understand that it's very complicated to fight state mandates. But we'd like to see at least some sense of being troubled and that there could be any kind of strategy to create, mount any kind of pushback or defense while also, you know, being prudent and taking the steps we need to do. It feels to us when we get a presentation like this, like it's just, this is it. This is how it is. We're going to, we're going to jam it in. I mean, 10 victory villages, that's what we're talking about here. 10 victory villages. Where are they going to go? How's this going to work? We have to be, we, you know, it's just not reasonable. So I think you'll get a better response from, from your constituents if you can actually address us and your consultants are sure great at their jobs, but like they should be disabused as to what they think they're coming into. We're not all going to jump up and down to do a name campaign and, and get excited about process. So we're, we're very, very troubled here.
Thank you, Richard.
The next speaker is Kathleen Paylor. Kathleen, whoops, just lost you. There you are. Okay, you're unmuted now. Thank you.
Okay, great. Hi, I'm actually Allison C's Kathleen's wife. We're, we're pretty upset about this. I do reconstruction for homeowners associations. I've been doing this for 20 years all over the Bay Area. I can tell you that homeowners associations condo developments are totally different than single families. It's a different type of owner. It's a different complexity. If you're talking about large homes, they're not going to be market, I mean, they're going to be market rate. They're not going to be below market rate. There might be a handful of them. They're going to have 500 to 750 homes with two cars per home or three cars. You know, not only, everything that everybody said here, absolutely, I totally agree with, with regards to traffic, fire, water, but it's going to completely change the complexity of this town. Period. It will not be Fairfax anymore. I lived in San Francisco. I've lived in New York. I've lived in LA. I live here because I love it, because it's close to nature and it's small and charming and sweet. And I don't want it to change. Now, does that mean that, you know, we shouldn't allow some development and have it be controlled? Of course not. I mean, I think we should because even people that live here have a hard time building additions or doing anything. It's just, it's not easy. It's really challenging because nobody wants you to develop. And now we're talking about throwing a bunch of new homes in? What about all the people that live here that want to develop? I mean, I don't understand this, this, I don't understand this focus at all. It doesn't make any sense to me. Let's just blow the town up because we want to add more homes? We have to think this through. This is really going to change the complexity of this town and not in a good way. And, you know, I don't live in Fairfax because, because of that. I live here because it is a beautiful, sweet, charming town where kids can ride around without their parents. It's safe for the most part. And, you know, it's, it's not a big city. It's not San Francisco and it's not San Rafael. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I don't see any more hands up at this moment.
Okay, well, thank you. We can close the public comment and we have a little bit of time for maybe some response to some of those comments.
Mayor?
Yeah.
If I may, Ben, if it's possible, could you address the ADU issue? A specific question that I have that I'd like to add to that member of the public's comment or question was, if, if we have our second story downtown in the central commercial units already occupied, but they're not legalized. If we bring them in and legalize them, does that, does that count as a RENA? The RENA?
Yes. Yes, if we're, if we're bringing in officially recognized units on, on board, that would count. And I would say that we've been pretty successful in that, that our numbers are somewhere around 10 to 15 ADUs a year, of which some number, and I don't have that off the top of my head, are units that are being legalized. In terms of being able to count those, we have been and will continue to. And in fact, as Richard pointed out, the, the changing landscaping of housing, this is one of the big success stories in providing what typically amounts to at least moderate, if not affordably priced, housing on these smaller units that people refer to the character of the town. So we do intend to proceed forward with this program. We'll be evaluating what's the best fit for Fairfax locations, things like that. But we will be counting those units. And in fact, we may be able to qualify to count some of the units during this fifth housing cycle because those are above projections. And then your next question, Renee, I'm sorry. It's focusing on.
That's fine. I think, I think that covered it.
Okay. I just want to add that remember that we created that amnesty program to bring in units from the cold. And I'm saying that primarily for our consultants, that that's a 10-year period without penalties and all ADUs, only NJ dues only have to pay half the permit fee. So I think we need to advertise that as well. And Ben, you did have a chart showing how many ADUs we legalized as well as how many we've gotten. And at the next meeting that you have with whatever group, it seems appropriate, bringing those numbers would be good. Thank you.
Yeah, I would also briefly say, responding to some of the concerns people have about, you know, it's kind of a done deal. This is a planning process. It's a very intensive one. We will be looking closely at key issues like water supply, like evacuation. We know that the fire authority is, is coming out with an evacuation study. So these are all very important aspects of what we will do and, and how we will be presenting that information. So please do get involved. You know, one of the things we're asking everyone, and it's not people from one particular viewpoint or another, but sign up, register. We'll figure out how to register people and make sure that people that don't want to be identified can still have their voice heard. But get involved with this process because the more and broader the community we hear from, the more we will be informed about your core issues. So it's work in progress.
Okay.
Ben, I, I had two questions for you. One was, was in relation to that ADU JDU piece, which was just wondering if the town has a sense of how many, you know, second units might be out there that are, that are not sort of accounted for formally? And might be interesting to get a sense of that compared to what is being asked of us in terms of, you know, if bringing those into compliance or formally recognizing those could affect the numbers. But the other thing I was going to ask, which was just something you, you reminded me of, how does the objective standards process interact with this housing element piece as well? Because there's a kind of concurrent things happening, right?
Yes. In terms of getting a sense of the overall number of ADUs and JDUs, including the ones that are out there that are sort of not officially counted, but people are living in. It's challenging to get that. I mean, short of going around to people's houses and seeing, you know, if the mailbox has an address with an A and B on it, there's no great way to get a handle on that. I will say though, that the experience, and maybe I'm speaking out of, out of school, but the experience that most people have in getting their ADUs legalized is not that daunting, that the state has relaxed the regulations considerably. And I think that most people who go through this process achieve an ADU at the end of it. And at a minimum, they become more informed of what it's, what's necessary to get that ADU or JDU legalized. In terms of objective design and development standards, Mr. Cutrone, yes, this is kind of on a concurrent track. And somebody brought up the question of Senate Bill 35, which for jurisdictions that have not completely complied with their housing element, regional housing needs assessment numbers. We are subject to that. What it basically involves is a streamlined, non-ministerial review of multifamily housing projects. So objective design and development standards give us the ability as a community to tell a developer who is otherwise to tell a developer who is otherwise pretty much applying for a building permit, what we want to see in our town. So we will be coming out with draft objective design and development standards, basically a toolkit and presenting that to the planning commission in the coming months. And staff believes that this is an important tool to retain what control the state still allows communities such as Fairfax over housing development proposals. So that's how that ties into that process.
Any other closing comments or questions for especially the consultants? Yes.
Thank you, Mayor. I I guess I just wanna to the public that the consultants are doing the work that the town is directing them to do. Staff is doing the work that the town is directing them to. The planning commission is doing the work that the town council is directing us to do. And the town council will be making decisions at various points along the way in this process and giving guidance to to everybody. So I really do think it is important that people are, you know, truly engaged. And I'm looking forward to seeing the schedule and the timeline available to all of our residents so that we can all stay on top of this process as we move forward.
Just a question. When do you expect that we will have the website page up with this information as well as the schedule? So and the registration work so that, you know, people can start getting at least involved, even though they may have concerns about it or not concerned. So when when do you think that'll happen? I'm not sure that, maybe I missed that on the schedule, but I don't think I saw it. Andy?
That will be mid-May and that will that will coincide with many of our initial committee meetings. So the goal is to help walk them through the the interactive site so that everybody feels empowered and and that those representatives can also share that information about how to use the site. We'll also have a how-to embedded in the site that will be interactive.
Okay, excellent. I just wanna say one thing is that, you know, the numbers are somewhat of a distraction. I think there's a way to get there without really changing the character of our town. Some of that is looking at how many garages we have and ADUs potential. All we have to do is plan for this. We don't have to build it. So it's not a redevelopment plan. It's a housing element. And I think we also really need to think about something that my colleague on affordable housing, Lisa Blash, said. We really need to have housing for a lot of folks. So I bought a place many years ago and I was a renter for my whole life before that. And, you know, being a renter is okay, but even our rentals are quite expensive. So, you know, I want us to look at a way of embracing this and really saying, what can we do to help people work in our town, live in our town? And really, you know, embrace diversity in our town, getting more folks of color to move in. You know, let's let's do what we can and not look at this as such a horrible barrier. Because I think there are ways to get to these crazy numbers without really changing the town. And I'm hopeful with EMC's help and our Michelle bang the table. And we can get to a good place all working together. Thank you.
I just I just wanted to plug really quickly. Yeah, thank you, Councilmember Kohler, as a renter. But the um I wanted to plug that for folks that are interested in getting a better sense of sort of the repercussions of of not sort of entertaining this process and things like that. We actually discussed a larger overview of this process at our previous council meeting on April seventh. And so I believe that's, you could find that on the town website and you could also find that on YouTube. But that that might be another good place to get a sense of the process that we were all discussing today. This wasn't really the the first meeting. We actually had a bit of an a broader overview with staff and met EMC on April seventh. So I'd recommend checking that out as well.
Good point. Okay. I'm thinking maybe we would adjourn the meeting at this point. It's we've got four minutes until our hard stop and then at seven forty-five is the beginning of our town council meeting. And for the public who are listening, we'll be closing this Zoom and the town council meeting will be on a separate Zoom. So look on the town council agenda to find that Zoom link. So unless anybody has any objections. Okay, Barbara, did you have an objection or? All right, we'll adjourn the meeting then. And thank you all.